We got four.
Have they rolled the intro, are we good to start?
Uh huh.
Have they rolled the intro, are we good to start?
Yeah, he told me whenever we're ready.
Okay.
Could I get a... Can I get a motion to come out of closed session, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Welcome, everybody, to the November 13th, 2013 meeting of the County Council. We'll begin our meeting with invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by John White. So, Mike Ealem, if you would, lead us in invocation. Everybody, please, rise.
Let's pray. Father God, we come before you tonight and we just ask your wisdom upon this meeting. We ask that you look over this meeting with your favor and give us the grace that we need to make the decisions that we need to do on behalf of this county. We thank you and we celebrate the time that we just went through with this election and we thank you for the peaceful transition of our government and the gifts that we have for the liberty that we experience. We thank you for those who we celebrated on Veterans Day and the gift that they give of service to make sure that we have the banner of freedom in this country. We ask for your grace again on this meeting tonight, and in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have roll call, please.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ealem.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
Okay, our next item is conditional use permits. First conditional use permit is Bill Number 4657.
Bill Number 4657 requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by Joe Brazel, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 18-12, for a brew house to Blue Heron Polo Club LLC and Blue Heron Farm LLC property owners and Yardstick Studio LLC applicant.
We'd like for... Dick's item would be to have the planning zoning staff bring this forward and present it to the council.
Mr. Meyer, do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Good evening. This is a request, as you stated, for a conditional use permit for a brew house at 4151 and 4451 Benny Road, and this property is... includes 184 acres on the north side of Benny Road between Highways D and DD near Rommel's Park. Again, approval would grant a conditional use permit to operate a brew house on the 184 acres. It's zone agricultural. There's a specific definition in our zoning regulations for what is a brew house. It has specific definition. And it includes the brewing of beer both onsite and off... for both onsite and off-site consumption, and it could include other accessory uses as well, including special events, preparation and sale of food, tours of the brew house, et cetera. Presently, the 184 acres, it has about 77 acres of well-established woodlands and an eight-acre lake and three ponds. The brew house itself, that facility would be about 25,000 square foot... square feet, and would be used primarily for small-scale brewery and distillery and a beer hall, with both indoor and outdoor seating capacity of 250 persons indoors, 250 persons outdoors. The applicant has described the proposed scale of brewing as about a one-and-a-half times the Trailhead Brewery on Main Street in St. Charles. Now, I've stated it incorrectly. If the applicant could please correct me, but I want to give you a sense of the scale because it's not exactly a microbrewery, but it's not... it's also not a full-scale industrial brewery like you might see in an industrial park. It's something in between, and it's also, in this case, intended to be tied to the land. The concept for food service would be limited to brew pub or kitchen service, meaning that food would likely be a secondary attraction for customers. I might add that the architectural concept would conform to the county's architectural requirements for brew houses. I might characterize this... this honestly reminds me of beer halls you might see in Germany with a collective indoor seating and then outdoor seating as well. Advanced well-water and onsite sewage disposal systems are proposed, and they can explain that if you feel like it's... you need information on that. Traffic is certainly a concern. Benny Road is a narrow county road with no shoulders, and two to three semi-tractor trailers a week would transport beer from the brew house. So, the traffic would not only be people coming to and from the beer hall, but also a limited number of deliveries in semi-tractor trailers. The applicant has commissioned a traffic study, and a representative from that firm is here tonight, in case you should have questions. This conditional use permit application went through an extensive public hearing process in which we had a great number of participants at the... at two different Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. They conducted a public hearing, they took public testimony, and in fact, the conditions that were recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission include a number of conditions that were agreed upon by both neighbors and by the applicant. Tonight, again, this is a conditional use permit consideration. There's three different main criteria by which you may impose conditions for the approval of any conditional use permit. Those criteria are listed in your staff report. The recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission was for approval of the conditional use permit subject to 13 conditions, again, that are in your staff report, and also those conditions are drafted within the bill that was submitted to you in the packet. County staff, like the Planning and Zoning Commission, recommends approval with certain conditions as conforming to the conditional use permit criteria, and in part, this is because citing of the rural destination would be within the center of this 184-acre tract with forested areas remain to screen the brew house from neighbors, which should substantially address land use impacts on neighboring properties.
Thank you. Is anybody any questions of staff?
What... do we wait till there's public comment on this process, or how do we deal with it?
At this point, if you have any questions...
On specifically what he just said?
Yes. Yes.
Not specifically what he just said, no.
Anybody else?
I would like to know that the applicant and applicant representatives are here tonight. If you have any questions, or, for instance, Rod Kozensky is in the audience.
Okay. I think at this point, as far as I'm concerned, I would like to go ahead and hear from them and then hear a public comment, and we can always come back if we've got questions.
Sure.
For staff.
Okay.
So, if the application... the applicant will come forward now, please?
I will need to swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. My name is Rod Kozensky. My company is Yardstick Studio LLC. I am the architect for the project, and I'm here as a representative for the applicant. I did not prepare a formal presentation necessarily. I am here... really, I was hoping to answer any questions that you guys may have. I know there are some of you that may or may not have seen some of the drawings and plans that we've done. I'm happy to walk through some of those architectural presentations. Oop. Too loud? Okay. I'm happy to walk through that. If you would like to see some of the architectural presentations, I can walk you through the site plan, any of those concerns. The main thing I wanted to address tonight was, as Robert alluded to, the 13 conditions that were recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission and what we've done since that meeting to address some of those concerns and begin the process of answering some of those questions. So, do you have questions about the architecture that you'd like to talk about first?
Do you have drawings or anything?
Yes, I do. I have presentation boards that we showed at the... I'm sorry, if this doesn't get recorded.
I'd like to see.
I'll take one of those. I don't know. It seems like this is such a public...
Mr. Chairman, I don't know that he understands. Only, I think Mr. Klinghammer is the only one who's seen this.
I would definitely go through the whole...
We need to...
Okay, okay. I wasn't quite sure if you guys have been given packets by Robert and have seen everything.
We had to watch the Planning and Zoning meetings.
The chairman's absolutely correct.
But it's good to see it again.
Okay, well, I will go through the whole thing here, and so we have a presentation. I've got site plans, and I've got perspectives for you, and I'll walk through the entire project, and just stop me if you have questions about any specific areas of the property. The parcel we're talking about is on the north side of Benny Road, which is here on the bottom of the drawing, and as Robert had said, it's a 176-acre parcel. There is existing road that accesses the site, an existing barn that's currently on the building, and an existing outdoor arena that exists already. This small square here is the proposed brewery, so you can see the footprint located in the center of the property, well away. In fact, the closest other structure is over 800 feet from our structure, and as Robert said, the building itself is 25,000 square feet in footprint. The part of the building that seems to be the most discussed portion of the building is the brew house itself, which will contain the area where the general public will be allowed.
Rod, hold on a second. Joanne, can't they put that on so everyone can see what...
Jennifer just went back. And do that right now. And perhaps if the presenter could go to the other side?
Sure, sure. Of that 25,000-square-foot footprint in the building, just under 4,000 square feet, so about 3,700 of it, is what we're allocating for the brew house restaurant portion of it, where the public will be able to go. The rest of it is the functional aspect where they'll be doing the brewing, where the processes will be happening. Now, they will, of course, have tours that will be escorted tours through there to show people the brewing process. The mechanics of that will be visible through glass windows so that people can see and experience how beer is made, but the selected square footage was based on what type of occupancy load we'd like to have for the restaurant itself and the brew house. And as also Robert alluded to, the restaurant aspect of it, since this is a destination location for beer, is an accessory sort of function. You have to provide food when you're providing alcohol to people. Nobody's going to come out there and just have chips. And so, what we're really talking about here for the general public is about 3,700 square feet. Contained within that space also are some other accessory functions. There's going to be a little museum element with some of the Bush family collectibles and things from the family history. There'll also be like a gift shop, a small gift shop, and some office space for them to manage the business out of. Let me give you like an overview of how people would come in through the existing road. There is a parking area for 100 parking spaces. There's a small drop-off turnaround spot in front of the entrance to the building, and then, as you go into the building, basically, you face towards the southwest to the lake that's on the property will be the views from the brew house itself for the general public. That's... that's all right. One of the things I did when I located the building on the site is we kind of analyzed where the site... one, would have some of the most spectacular views. Obviously, the water is a great vista to look at, but also to sort of situate it on the site so that it was the most minimally impactful to any of the surrounding neighbors. I don't have a topo map here for you guys, but basically, there's a ridge that runs along here and a high stretch across here, and I actually did a little sightline study the other day. If you were standing on this north property line, you'd see about three feet of the roof from a five-foot vantage height. So, the building does not... it's not a huge building. It's not very obtrusive to... from off-site. And of the 13 points that were requested by the Planning and Zoning Commission or suggested, some of those points were tree lines and berms to help screen some of this. We were already planning on doing a lot of those things. There's an area here that has some gaps in it that we've already planned on remedying. So, basically, I don't believe the building itself will be visible from off the property at all.
Mr. Chairman, could he please use the screen up there so the people in the audience know what he's talking about?
Oh, okay. I didn't know we had another one of those. Here, I'll use my pen here. Yeah, so, do you want me to go back over and... okay. So, that's basically the layout of the site, the character of the building, and if Robert's got all of these things here, this would be great. Thanks, Robert. It's based on an old German barn concept, which is... one of the reasons I was selected, I believe, as the architect is because it's in the context of this agricultural district, so barns and the agricultural look and style. And so, it's really tough to see on this overhead even, but there are a few barn characteristic pictures here that will be shown of old German barns, and I've got some renderings that are not on this one, but you can see the elevations of the... these are elevations and perspectives of the building itself. Very low profile, human scale. I forget the exact height. It's been a little bit since I looked at the elevations, but I think we're at 28 feet high, so well below the bulk plane requirements for the district, which I believe is 40 feet. The other concept behind this was that it was a series of smaller buildings that were put together over time is kind of the story behind it. So, it's not just one massive factory-looking structure. It's a small collection of barns that create this establishment, again, staying in context with that agricultural district. That's basically... do you have any questions about the architecture or any of the planning beyond that? I'd like to go over what we've done since the last Planning and Zoning Commission hearing and tell you what we've done. We've brought on consultants to address many of the concerns. We have environmental... civil engineers working on some of the environmental aspects and conditions for the site with Bax Engineering. They're a local firm. They were actually the surveyors on the property, and they're going to continue on with all the civil work in preparation for the site plan review. And as Robert had said, we have CBB Traffic Engineering. They're ones that St. Charles is familiar with. They work quite often in the county, and Brian Rensing is here if there's questions about that. They have performed an initial study on Benny Road, and he has a nine-page sort of initial proposal that explains the conditions of the existing road and a brief overview of the impact that this may have on the local road traffic and the significance of it, and I'm happy to go over some of those, or we can have Brian go over them. We've brought on Geiler and Associates. Jeff Geiler is an acoustical engineer that we're working with. It has done an initial observation of the site through the topo... through the topography and with the location of the building to analyze the complexities that would be involved in addressing the acoustical ramifications. And I got an email back from him today stating that the means and methods that would be required to mitigate any sound impact to conform with the ordinances of St. Charles County would be standard practices. It doesn't look like there's anything that he would have concerns about, that we'd have to do something above the ordinary. Lighting was one of the concerns. We've already got a mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineering firm that has a lighting consultant on board that will help address those issues with the dark sky lighting program that they recommended. And so, those are the things that we've done so far in beginning those processes. Obviously, most of that is not complete because, for example, full traffic impact studies take much longer than the two-and-a-half weeks I think we've had since the last meeting, but we have started those processes and attempted to address that. One other item I would bring up is as we were going through, we've had discussions on the 13 elements that have been recommended. We've come to realize that a couple of the items, Items 3 and 4, I believe, are on the list there, which have to address the hours of operation. I've been asked to sort of address those a little bit in that we felt that this sort of singled us out, or this project out differently than it had other projects of similar character, like the vineyards and stuff, for hours of operation, and put unique restrictions on us that were not imposed on others that have been put under similar... I know it's not the same CUP, but it was modeled after sort of the Vineyard CUP, and so we're asking that for those considerations and recommendations that were discussed during the Planning and Zoning, that it be considered that we be given fair treatment for those hours of operations as similar operations have been given.
What items were there?
Mr. Chairman? Three and four.
So, it was... I believe it was Items 3 and 4. Is that the way the final?
Correct. Just a second. Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going to get a little upset when you talk about being fair. At P&amp;Z, you're kind of implying that it wasn't a fair time. The way I remember it, and I was there. We ask about times, and your client said it was okay. So, are we saying it's not okay now?
I would, if I may, I'd like to interject on this one.
Let's... let's... Joe, I'm...
Well, I'd like to say...
I ask a question.
No, I'd like to say because...
Joe, I ask a question. You can go ahead and answer the question, please.
Yes, so, in the successive... subsequent discussions that we've had, it's been brought to our attention that this may be restrictive on his business model, knowing that we don't really have the full business model worked out, and while we don't anticipate there being any reason why those hours, when we discuss those during the Planning and Zoning Board, hindering it at this point, we don't want to be locked into something that would be in perpetuity if his business model proved that, you know, not having those restrictions would be... would make the business more successful.
Okay.
And so, you know, negotiating that during the moment, back and forth during the Planning and Zoning meeting, I don't think that... you know, we certainly didn't have enough time to think through the ramifications of that or know the legality or how that ordinance may or may not be written, so...
Okay.
Mr. Brad?
Well, I was going to say, I don't know how... like, we're on this new CUP process, so I do know that Mr. Goffrey had made mention that he was going to waive the hearing process and go to the traditional CUP method. Is that a fact?
We have stipulation agreement that we're... as of the beginning of this meeting, we have no reason to believe that we will need to go through stipulation.
So, that means he's going to the traditional process, right, Mr. Hazelwood, the traditional CUP?
I think what he just said is that you're going to turn in this stipulation, this form that's called a stipulation. And that will avoid the contested case process.
We plan to unless there's some development that requires us to utilize these forms, but we don't intend to, no.
Yeah, so that you and I are on the same wavelength, you need to turn that in sometime later this evening or the next day or so.
The reason I say that is because I do have a substitute bill that I'd like to give to the council, but I was instructed I could not give it out to the general public or to the council until that was stipulated. So, at this time, I would like to... it wasn't even able to put on online, so I'd like... this is the substitute bill that was... all the stuff that Planning and Zoning put in there, and then we put some additional restrictions in there.
Just a second, Joe. You know, they said that they would stipulate, but they didn't say they have stipulated. So, I don't think technically... correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm not a lawyer, but in the new CUP process, they have to stipulate before the next step. Correct or not?
Yeah, I think... you want to just turn that in right now? Why don't you just give it?
May I have a question, sir?
Sure.
Can we take... can we just take a second about process? If he turns that in, is the process not now closed? The whole process is based on the fact that when... when all of this has happened in front of you all, then the applicant has the choice about whether or not they want a full hearing or whether they're willing to stipulate that the record that has been made in front of you all already is sufficient to show their case. I think it's a... I think it is a wrong thing for us to do to ask this applicant to put a stipulation in at this point in time.
Well, when do we normally do it? Because here's the thing, is between Mr. Goffrey and Mr...
After today is closed is when you normally would do it.
So, we're going to sit here and talk about all this stuff that we already worked out that's in some... we changed a lot of this stuff after the conversations that they set and worked out, but I'm not able to present this to the people to see what was changed, and we're going to waste all this time.
Mr. Brazel, you're not only not going to vote tonight, while the applicant is having his say right now, anybody who's here as a member of the public has a right to step forward, be sworn, and have their say as well, and that's all part of the record, as well as what happened in front of P&amp;Z the other night. So, until all of that is in the record, you don't actually know. You may think you know what you want to do, but you haven't heard it all, so you don't actually know what you want to do.
Okay, all right, that's fine. I mean, if that's how we're going to do it, that's fine. That's not how I understood. That's not what I was told. This is a new process, just so you guys know. It's really complicated, and I don't like it at all. But... but may I... if we're going to start that way, then I want to explain to everybody how we got to where we are and how this all started, okay? Billy Bush and Mark had asked me about doing a brewery. They've been talking about this for a year or two or whatever, and they had come to me and asked me how they're going to go about doing this and if it was possible, and I told them they needed to go to the AT District. The AT District is agriculture tourism. You have to have 40 acres, and it has a lot of restrictions. He met with the staff, and staff... well, you guys decided to go with a brewery ordinance, all right? Explain that, Robert, why we want... why you guys went in that direction, or one of you guys, explain that.
Well, because what was being proposed was not actually allowed anywhere within our zoning regulations, and so when someone comes forward and proposes a use that's not allowed anywhere in the zoning regulations, there's two ways forward. One is that the Community Development Director, in consultation with the County Counselor's Office, can place it within the most appropriate district, or a bill can be passed to address it. It made more sense for a bill to be passed to address it and to include certain minimum requirements, preconditions, for instance, and in this case, the AT District is on the books, but it's never been used. No winery has ever been zoned AT. No winery has ever developed under the AT District standards. A brew house was not permitted in the AT District, and also special events, like they want to do, is not permitted in the AT District. But they are... those special events are allowed in the agricultural district. So, the decision was made was to recommend to this body that the ordinance be amended to allow brew houses in agricultural tourism... I'm sorry, in agricultural zoning district with certain preconditions, and one of those preconditions is a minimum of 40 acres, for instance. So, that's a precondition for any brew house to come forward and even be considered by this body, and that's essentially how it came about.
Okay, so, the brewery ordinance was delivered to the council, and we voted on it. We never had any...
The one that allows a brew house, yes.
Yeah, so, the AT District... Yeah, so the AT District, from their perspective, what, what, well, from the county, okay, the county was doing, we have been doing wineries for like a hundred years, right? So out in the southwest, in, into the town, they've been wineries forever, and there's more and more wineries. And so the wineries were growing, doing, instead of just doing wine, selling beer, having weddings, having events, having all these things, wanting to do lodging, wanting to do other stuff, so we had to get a handle with it. So what we did is, we make it, made an AT District, and it made it strict, forty acres, agriculture, all kinds of architectural designs, setbacks, only seven percent can be developed, all these setbacks, and, or all these restrictions. And so when the brewery ordinance came before us, we passed it, but then when Mr. Bush did the applicant, he didn't have all those restrictions, and there was some real concern about that. So what we have done with the changes is, there's been some neighbors, we met with, me and Mike and Dave, you weren't there, were you? No, we had meetings with all the neighbors in the area and with Mr. Bush and Mark, and went over, went over changes and went over restrictions. And right now, the restrictions that we added, there were fourteen, like, you've heard about the Plan and the Zoning, there were fourteen or thirteen points in one and fourteen in the other. We added all of them, that, that was agreed upon against the two, the brewery and the neighborhood people. They all agreed to these, these are what we agree on, and there were some that they didn't agree on. And we can go over, we can go over the ones they didn't want to agree on, but when we met with staff, with some of the attorneys, some of the restrictions were too restrictive, that we don't do with anybody, okay? Some of those are even in here, what he's speaking about on the timeframes, it's questionable when you give a guy a permit to say, yes, we're gonna allow you to do this business, but you have to close Monday through Friday, or Monday through Thursday at eight PM, you gotta ask yourself, how reasonable is that? And I told Steve Summercamp that I didn't agree with that, just from my, my, my philosophy on, on not killing business, that's not fair, because we don't do that to anybody. And so those are some of the, now, it's in the ordinance, Steve, it's in our eight PM, but these are some of the things we're gonna have to have a conversation on, because if you're gonna agree to give somebody a permit, say, yes, Mr. Bush agreed to a hundred fifty foot setback, he agreed to, which is huge, and, and berms, and undisturbed wooded. Nobody does, no one else has ever done that. And, and then there's a lot of other restrictions in here. If you went to the AT District, which, you know, some of the folks are calling me saying, oh, you made this brewery thing just for him. If we went to the AT District, he could have a theater, he could have lodging, there's all kinds of things you could do. So what they're, what the staff was trying to do is streamline it, streamline it to a brewery, and they gave it to us pretty generic, and then it's our job to craft it with the restrictions that makes it work for the, for the council. Now, let's just say, oh, you know, Brazel, you know, he should vote no for this. Well, there's, there's seven of us, and these six other guys may, probably are in favor of this, so we gotta try to make this work, because this fits into the, the scheme of wineries and other things. And he has a hundred and eighty acres, whereas wineries just have to have forty. And some wineries, if it's just a winery, they don't even have to have forty acres. The fact that the AT District wasn't working because it was so strict was probably the way we made it so strict, so it wouldn't work. Because we're having so many applicants, we had to make something so hard to get to, and in county's eyes, and in staff's eyes, it wasn't working. But in my eyes, it was working because no one was doing it. So we could have not done that and just keep doing what we're doing and letting the wineries just do whatever they want to do and, and whatever, have a free fall, we had to figure out a way to control it. And so Mr. Bush, we're trying to apply for the AT District, it would have probably been worse, it would have been broader than what he's got now. But you, I mean, so that's just kind of how, how it evolved and why we are where we are.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Crowder.
Just a quick comment for the public that's watching this or out there. I had a hard time finding, but all these photographs that we're seeing are attached to that bill on the county's website, so you can look. First time I saw them, and frankly, they're very attractive looking buildings. I do have a question to address your comments. Robert, the, the hours of operation that they're, that they're requesting, that we're requesting as conditions in this, how do they vary from what is, is common in the wineries? I, the reason I'm saying is, I don't know if it's a hundred percent fair, whether you're fermenting grapes or fermenting beer or fermenting whiskey, I think the hours of operation be, should be similar. So are they similar to, to bring this gentleman's point up to what the, the wineries are? Are they more restrictive?
Well, first of all, I would say that the ordinance doesn't have specific hours for wineries. So it's on a case-by-case basis is how this has been handled. A lot of times, the tasting room for a winery will close down earlier, say, maybe six PM, but for special events or for restaurants, it could be much later. A lot of the conditional use permits that we've seen for these special events, starting with the Pumpkin Patch, and then going on to these, these other special event centers, many of them have had a stipulation that amplify music either end at ten PM or ten thirty PM and that the events end by eleven PM. That's been pretty typical, but it's not a standard requirement.
I kind of did a little research before this. If you wouldn't mind taking a look between now and the next meeting, at what, what the Pumpkin Patch in my district is. Chitaur Hill, we just approved that, and just get a consensus of what the hour, what the hours of operation are? Because I, I don't think it's any fair to restrict them a whole lot more for these folks than what those other folks would. And the other thing, I, and I agree with Mr. Brazel on this one, I don't like the new process. I like the way it was, again, I go back to my days of being an alderman. The best thing about a conditional use permit is the first word, conditions. And the idea is that you, along with Mr. Gottfried and Mr. Summercamp, get together and you agree on, on conditions and you incorporate it in that bill. And when we get so formal with the legalities that we can't do that, that we're not really doing our job as councilmen. So I, I really, I was really happy to see the information that came through from Mr. Gottfried and Mr. Summercamp and your input on this new bill, and I think you guys are marching towards the right, right direction.
Can I say, I, I agree with all of you, I agree with all of you. But I also know that by ordinance, by law, there's a process that we have to follow tonight, okay? And we need to follow that process, okay? I mean, I agree with both of you.
Well, that's what we're doing, I'm not gonna introduce the bill, because I'm not, yeah.
Right, right, so, but I, I think we need to let him finish up, and I think we need to get the public comments from the people that are opposed or are for, and carry on with what the process really is, correct?
Absolutely.
Can I ask a question about the architectural?
Yes.
Aspect of this? In your planning for the, your, your building, do you plan it so that all the product that this company is gonna make will be able to be manufactured in this facility?
All the, the entire company will make, they also, they already make this product off-site.
I know that, but is the plan that they won't have to do it off-site?
No, I believe, they'll, they'll continue to brew stuff off-site as well.
Very good.
The, the idea behind this is, it's not to be a huge factory, that this is to be a destination location to showcase their premium beers and, and their craft beers, and, and really sort of an iconic structure that sort of, as, as a flagship sort of place to, to market and for promotional purposes. They already brew much of their beer off-site.
Very good. Okay, is there anything else that you would like to?
No, I, I really, if there's questions about, you know, specifically architecture, I've been kind of thrown into these other things, I, I guess, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know all the legalities of all this, but specifically architectural.
I'd like to proceed is, I mean, we, it, when we get done with the public comment portion, then we could, if we have some more questions.
Absolutely.
We can bring you back up.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Are you, did you say earlier, there'll be a presentation later on about the traffic study?
We can bring, we can.
At the next meeting?
We can bring the, the traffic engineer up.
Well, whenever you do that, that just needs to get into the record that they can.
I can.
You can do it, you can do an incomplete one tonight and finish it up next meeting, or just, I guess, wait until the next meeting, but.
Let's, let's get what Brian has.
Yeah, if you guys would allow Brian to come up, is that okay?
Yeah, I think that would.
To speak, I mean, he's much better versed, he's the engineer, not me.
Because I think this is an important concern that a lot of the public out there has too, so.
And I'll need to swear you in, sir. Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Hi, my name's Brian Rensing, I'm a traffic engineer with CBB Transportation Engineers and Planners. We just got started, so we just kind of start off with an assessment, looking at the existing conditions and generating some trips for it, because it's a unique use that our standard references doesn't specifically address. So we wanted to kind of document what's out there now, based on the information that the proposed user has. And then we also compared those trips that they think they're gonna generate to a similar use like the winery and some different restaurants. So we've got that here. I don't know if you've given it to.
No, I don't think we've delivered that to them.
Okay, so I, I can kind of basically go over it with you.
Okay.
And as you all know, Benny Road's kind of a relatively narrow twenty, twenty-one foot road. It does have low volume currently, it's got two curves on the west end. So basically, we would anticipate that the trucks would need to go towards Route DD for any sort of access, so they don't have to traverse those sharp curves and culverts and that type of thing. I do have to say, we did not look at any sort of structural stability, but there was no posted weight restrictions or time of year restrictions indicating there's any sort of pavement issues. It looks relatively new as far as condition, but again, I don't know anything about the structures of it. Looking at the intersections with Benny and DD, and then we'll look at the intersections with Benny and D. Both of those intersections look concerning as far as with D, it kind of goes around the curve, and in Benny Road kind of ties in at an angle there. Just driving it myself, it looks like there could be some sight distance concerns through the middle, and especially trying to make that left turn from Route D onto Benny Road. So we'll try to address that further in the traffic study. And then again, at DD and Benny Road, there's kind of a hill going to the south, so we'll look at the sight distance issues there as well in the traffic study. Their entrance also, there's brush and vegetation and trees and stuff kind of along the entrance there. Did not have time to fully evaluate that either, so as part of the traffic study, we'll look at the sight lines again at their entrance, go in both directions there to make sure there's appropriate sight distance at that location as well. As I mentioned, we looked at some of the, the operating conditions of the facility, and as they indicated, it's more of a seasonal type of use with heavier use in the fall, summer, and springtime with lower use in, in the winter. Based on, we, we looked at a couple different ways. We looked at basically it running at full occupancy, turning over a full two hundred and fifty patrons every two hours, which is kind of their anticipated timeframe that somebody would stay there. And looking at about a two and a half persons per vehicle to estimate trips. We went from there and then kind of looked at the average weekday that, for daily trips as well as the PM peak hour, because they're not gonna generate any traffic really in the morning, because they're not gonna be open except for some of the office folk. So we've got that documented here. And generally, what they expect during the Friday, or like any sort of typical weekday or Friday, is, is under three hundred trips per day. So we don't think that there's really too much of a capacity concern for the road or at the intersections. Saturday, they expect to be a little bit busier and could generate up to maybe about twelve hundred vehicles per day with about a hundred vehicles in the peak hour per direction. And that assumes kind of more of one-hour timeframe turnover during the peak hour, so that, you know, people come in and out a little more frequently. Then we, we looked at the comparison of a drinking place for a Friday and a winery, and those are on the same order of magnitude as what we estimated for the, the proposed brewery, so. And again, that was about forty total trips during the PM peak hour. And typically, a Friday is gonna be a little, little bit on the heavier side on that forty trips versus the typical weekday. We also looked at a Saturday during, again, the, the total comparison there with the winery and some restaurants. And those, again, are in pretty much the similar order of magnitude. So we also estimated trips for a special event, which would happen a few times a year. And then looking at, looking at Benny Road, it seems like there could be maybe around a thousand trips per day on it today, and then maybe, like I said, at, at the maximum turnover, an additional twelve hundred vehicles trips per day. You're still under twenty-five hundred trips per day, so, you know, a two-lane road facility can handle that, and we expect that. So we'll completely evaluate that during the traffic impact study process. So going on the next steps here in the process, we'll look at the two intersections at DD and D as well as Wilson and then the side entrance. And then, again, we, we think the trucks should be oriented over to DD versus trying to traverse those curves. Any questions?
Anybody got any questions?
Have you looked at the traffic that happened from, because you have polo matches there, correct? Have you looked at the traffic from those polo matches?
No, we have not looked at any sort of special events that they have now and compared them to anything in, in the future.
I'm just curious of how much traffic would be at a, an average match, and I'm assuming that you're trailering horses in and out, which is probably gonna be close to the same length of a beer truck by the time you do the truck and the trailer. So I'm just curious if sight lines have been a problem, if there's been any traffic issues with those in the past, any kind of accidents have happened in those in the past. I'm just trying to look at what's occurring in that area over the past couple of years. Has there been any issues there that may have presented themselves at some time? Because that's the only thing I can think to be close to what you're doing, and it's pretty much in, as close as we're gonna get to an apples-to-apples comparison in terms of traffic coming in and out on a large scale and with larger vehicles pulling in and out. If there's been any kind of problems in the past that you'd done any type of historical study on?
I have not.
Obviously, two and a half weeks into it, I can't expect too much.
I haven't done any sort of historical study on, on the polo club or anything.
That's a good question, Mike.
I appreciate that, I was just curious, so.
Would you answer that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because I'm out there for all the big polo.
Would you do me a favor and come up here? It's better than you yelling through the back, I don't want to make you yell.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Hi, my name's Billy Bush, I'm the applicant for this plan. And, yeah, we've had several polo matches out there at the polo fields over the years, and we've had up to three thousand people at some of those games. And never have I heard of any traffic problems coming out or leaving the polo fields for games like that. I've never heard of any problems from the grooms or the people that are playing polo, driving the horse trailers out to the polo matches, pulling in there and getting out, has not, never been a problem that, that I've ever seen, so.
Do they typically take that same route of Double D down?
Yeah, normally, they take, most of them take the route from Double D, Double D to Benny to the polo fields.
Okay.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
I have no further questions.
Anybody else?
I, I guess I did want to put a little bit in perspective, so, you know, twenty-five hundred vehicles per hour, or, excuse me, per day, is kind of more like a residential street, like a local residential street. And a two-lane road can handle on the order of, you know, more than, more than ten thousand, say, like Double D up near, like Summers Road and that type of thing. So capacity is not really a concern here, and, you know, like I said, I was out there and there was thirty cars during like fifteen minutes, so. I, I just want to kind of put the, you know, the volume into perspective, so.
Okay. So at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the meeting to public comment. Any individuals supporting or opposing this application is now invited to share their comments with the council. Council staff will, will call you forward, one at a time, each speaker that has submitted a speaker card. Upon conclusion of the individual comments, please remain at the podium for any follow-up questions that the council or staff may have. And we encourage you to. And we encourage you to keep your comments to three minutes, and should any other speaker have shared the same information, feel free, just come up and say ditto, that you agree with the previous speaker, and the record will reflect you shared an opinion also stated. With that, would you please call the first speaker?
I have Russell Roark. He's filled out to speak on 4657 and 4658.
My name's Russell Allen Roark, and I live at 4286 Huffmire Road, and I also own property at 1245 Flintlock. I've got a positive attitude about this brew house. I may be one of the only people that's attended any of these meetings that actually owns property directly next door to a brew house. I own property in Old Downtown Winneville that is directly next door to the Friendship Brew House. It's a smaller scale, but they do the same thing. They brew beer there, they ship their beer out, and they bring other beers in. So, there is truck traffic. The streets in Old Downtown Winneville are no wider than Benny Road. They, some of the streets there, you can't even park on them, they're so narrow. This brew house, and my property is directly next door on the, I have a commercial business there. It's on the west side. The north side of the brew house is a telephone office. The brew house covers one city block. And on the west side and the south side is a residential home. I've never had any problems with this brew house at all. I've never heard any of the residents in that area complain about it. They do all the same things there. They have indoor and outdoor seating. They serve food there. They have a large menu. They do special events there. They have live music. Their hours of operation through the week are until 10:00 PM, and Friday and Saturday night until 11:00 PM. To me, they've been a good neighbor. I also have, one block away, I have a rental property, and my renters there have never complained one time about anything with the brew house. Sometimes, they even walk over there to listen to the music. They have indoor and outdoor seating there. So, like I said, not many people have been right next door to a brew house, and I'm looking forward to there being one just about a half mile from where I live. Now, I've heard a lot of talk about the traffic. I know it's being addressed, but all of our roads out where we live are narrow. If you drive out in that area during school hours, when schools are starting or letting out, try and go down Summers Road if you want to see how many cars can be on one road at one time. And all these roads are the same. Summers Road, DeWello Road, Highway DD, Z, Highway N, they're all, they've all got schools on them. They all got heavy-volume traffic, and they're all two-lane asphalt roads with no shoulder, just like Benny Road. So, those are my comments. I'm glad that Mr. Bush is bringing this to our neighborhood. I'm sure counties like Warren County and Lincoln County would roll the carpet out for something like this. But I thank the committee, and I thank Mr. Bush. Thank you.
Anybody got any questions, this gentleman? Eric None, thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker on CP 1812 would be William Carrier.
I do. Good evening. Again, my name is Bill Carrier. I live at 4310 Diana Lane. When the plot was up there, my property borders the Blue Heron property. I'd like to, number one, my wife and I have lived there for a little over a year. It's our retirement home. It's something that we've planned for over about seven years and invested in heavily for the solitude that this part of the county currently has. We remain opposed to this plan. I like to look at this process that we've gone through as a series of four dominos. The first domino to fall was the creation of the brew house conditional use. Last summer, we, the local residents, learned that the applicant was dissatisfied with the existing conditional use definitions for brewing, and approached county government to create a new type specifically tailored to its needs. That resulting conditional use definition of brew house, before you get to the conditions, has almost no limitations, and is fundamentally counter to the kind of lifestyle of many of the residents that live there. So, approving this conditional use without a lot of public comment was really the first domino to fall in this process. The second domino was the evaluation of the application by the Planning and Zoning Department's staff. Before I make my remarks here, I would just like to state, I was an aerospace engineer for 35 years for a local aerospace company, where I was vice president of engineering and responsible for the engineering activities for 4,700 engineers over 12 sites. So, I know something about doing an analytical evaluation of a design or a project. I feel that the Planning and Zoning Department's staff ended up with a biased evaluation of this application by not conducting a fact-based, critical review of the project. The obvious potential adverse impacts of traffic, safety, waste disposal, and others were not addressed in an independent analytical manner. They also did not adequately evaluate the potential for noncompliance with existing St. Charles County noise ordinances. Rather, the staff basically reformatted the applicant's information to create what is fundamentally an unsubstantiated opinion of unquantified impact to the local landowners. That was the second domino to fall. So, with their approval in their analysis report, which concluded, yep, this is consistent with the brew house definition, go forward, it then moved to the Planning and Zoning Commission. That was the third domino to fall. So, with those two first approvals, and with public comment, both pro and con, and with the efforts, I will say, of the brewing company, as well as representatives of our local ad hoc community organization, trying to come up with a set of conditions that we could all live with. But, the actual execution in the second public hearing on that topic, in the actual execution of setting those conditions, it was a very confusing exchange, citing condition numbers from a couple of different documents, and a set of condition was kind of developed in real time, and with very little discussion or debate, voted upon, and there was a third domino falling. We had now the Planning and Zoning Commission approving this application. Fortunately for us, the brewing company and our local ad hoc representatives have continued their negotiations, as Councilman Brazel has kind of indicated. And we think that the additional, the traffic study, the noise study, a study on owners, we think those are all extremely important to quantify the potential adverse impact, right? I'm an engineer. Until I see analysis and numbers, everything is opinion. And so, I just implore you gentlemen, before you vote on this application, to please get all of that data quantified and open to the public, so that we can look at it, those of us who understand engineering studies and analyses, and so that we can make a knowledgeable, informed decision on not only whether to approve or reject this application, but as you all indicated, to come up with a set of conditions that balance development in the county with the desires and the rights of the existing landowners. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Before you leave, does anybody have any questions for this gentleman? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
The next speaker on bills 4657 and 4658, Steve Summercamp.
My name's Steve Summercamp, and I live at 4313 Diana Lane. My property directly adjoins the northeast corner of the 184 acres that we were talking about earlier today. I'm here today as a trustee of the Lexington Park subdivision, which I live in, as well as a representative of a lot of the concerned citizens that live in the immediately impacted area. For the last six weeks, I've spent some portion of almost every day dealing with this proposal. I could easily speak for an hour. Obviously, we're not given that kind of time, so, understanding that, I submitted an email to each of you last night. Hopefully, you've had an opportunity to read it, or that you'll take the time to read it. Knowing that we wouldn't have all the time, I wanted to try and get some points across. As I stated in my email, I would like to see this proposed brew house moved to a commercial district where the necessary infrastructure is in place and better suited to support not only this business and its operations, but also the potential for growth. And I ask the council to truly consider that as an option when you're going through this process and you're considering how you should vote or the decision that you should make. While I'd like to see this brew house moved, I'm not convinced that the county necessarily shares my point of view. And so, what we've done is we've tried to work with the applicant to create a set of conditions that will limit the impacts on the people that are already existing there. And we have. We've worked tirelessly over a lot of meetings to try and come up with a set of conditions. Are they perfect? I don't think either one of us thinks that they're perfect, but it's where we've ended up so far. Unfortunately, not all of those conditions that we've come to agree upon are included in the bill that is being read to you tonight. I think that's in large part what Councilman Brazel's talking about with this substitute bill. I haven't had a chance to see it. I would like to see it, to see how that coordinates with all the things that we have agreed upon. I'm asking the council that you include all of those things that we've mutually agreed upon in any ordinance that you're going to vote on. Those conditions were included in several documents in the email that I sent you, just as a reference, one of which included a modified AT district set of guidelines or documents. That document wasn't meant to be an either-or scenario. What we've agreed upon is that that was to be compiled together with the individual lists as an inclusive piece of conditions. I know not everybody on the council agrees with the AT concept, but we have agreed to those concepts and those guidelines. There are a few things throughout the process that we're still not in agreement with, and we've highlighted both of them. We've made our case in the documents. I hope you guys look at it. Ultimately, you're going to have to make a decision of whether you support, don't support, whatever the case is. Traffic has been a big concern. I ask that before you guys vote, you have a chance to really see and understand and review a full traffic study. And I'll leave on this. According to the conditional use permit that's already existing in the St. Charles County UDO, 405.510.B, prior to approval of any conditional use, the county may impose conditions at will that will ensure the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes that are already permitted. I'm asking the county if those requirements have been met. I'm also asking if you will make sure that conditions are put in place to meet that requirement, or are we going to just ignore existing ordinance in law for St. Charles County? Any conditional use that's approved should be worthy based upon its merits, and it should prove that it's worthy of being put in a place that is not designed to go. It should not be granted approval just because it was requested, but because it has met all the conditions to do so. The burden of proof to prove that should be on the applicant. It should not be on the citizens that are already existing. And throughout this process, I feel like citizens have been put at a disadvantage with that burden of proof, as opposed to asking critical questions of the applicant after this process, and ensuring that this is something, if it is approved, has really been thought out and is not just looked at from a really high perspective and said, we're not worried about the details. The details matter, and that's why we've spent six weeks and hours and hours and hours working on some very specific conditions. And I just hope that you guys will review those, and I would like to ask that all the conditions that we've agreed upon will be put in any bill that be voted on. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, we got a couple.
I want to really thank Steve for all the time and energy that he's put into this. It has been amazing to me to see residents, when they come forward and they don't just say, well, I don't like this, or I do like this. Steve really got into it and found, you know, the facts, really what's going on with it, and tried to really understand the project first, before he just said, well, my opinion is that I don't like this. He has, Steve's been able to give very good reasons why, you know, to back up his particular position. In the end, we may or may not agree with that, and I applaud you on looking at it as, from the big picture as well, as getting down into the weeds, because it needs to be looked at from both perspectives. I know you've worked hard with Mark also, from the developer's side, and Mark has had nothing but good things to say about the way, your method of approaching this. And I really wanted to reach out to you and say, thank you. We certainly appreciate it. And your involvement from a residential standpoint is critical to us making good decisions. So, thank you very much for the time, the energy, and the professionalism that you brought to this whole process. So, thank you again.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Steve, thanks. I appreciate what you've done too. Also, a couple of things here. I want to make sure I understand this, because I want you to understand that I don't understand this, one or the other. I talked to Mark yesterday, the day before, and you guys agreed on these, I think it's 14 points or something, 13 points, on this one here, this first one that you sent out, this one here, the 1312. And the restrictions that you put on there were all restrictions that are in the existing AT district, correct?
Not necessarily.
Well, I added additional ones, like the 7%.
Those were the ones that are in the AT. So, the email that I sent out, which is a document that Mark and I compiled and sent to Councilman Brazel last week, early last week, I think, were three documents. One was a specific set of conditions for CUP 1812, which is the north side, the 184 acres. A second set of conditions for CUP 1813, which is the south side. And then, the other document was essentially a takeoff or a mimic of the AT district guidelines that are currently in place. What we did is we took those guidelines, as we discussed and went through our process, we came down to a point where they were willing to accept all of those guidelines with a few exceptions. We've got a few disagreements there. What we did is we took those AT guidelines, and we, anywhere that it said winery, we changed to brew house, and he said, any place it said grow grapes, we put agricultural products, something that made sense for the brew house. Our intent, I believe, was that that first list and the AT guidelines would be used together, not one or the other, for any conditions that we put. And then, the second list for 1813 and that AT guidelines would be put together and used as a set of conditions. So, it wasn't an either-or, and it wasn't necessarily that the list included all this stuff from the AT guidelines. It was that they were kind of to be used jointly, and that was the goal.
Well, here's where the confusion is, and Robert, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but what, you wanted the restrictions, not only the AT restrictions, and you added additional restrictions that you guys agreed to, which is 14 of them, right?
Yes.
And I added the other ones in there, the 7%, no outside storage, stuff like that that was said, but it wasn't in these notes, okay? That's on the other that we can't talk about right now.
Okay.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure that the restrictions were added, but not the privileges. You understand that, right? So, the AT district allows lodging, music, theaters, other uses, right, Robert? The AT, it offers more latitude. The AT, it offers more latitude, but those weren't put in there, just the restrictions. You understand that?
That's correct. We went off of the conditional use guidelines that were set in place.
So, you can't add those privileges. We cannot put those... Are you suggesting that we should have put the privileges in with the AT, with this brewery ordinance as well?
No. We went off the basis that what they applied for...
Okay. So, I agree with you, but Mr. Goffrey was unclear. He thought that the privileges were added back in because you wanted it to duplicate to AT district. And I made it clear yesterday that that's not what we're doing, because we streamlined the brewery ordinance, so it did not give them so much latitude, okay?
Yeah, we've never had a discussion about privileges.
Okay, you can clarify, but I just wanted to be clear that we took, there are more restrictions to this than the AT district, and they did not get the privileges.
Yes.
Okay? So, that needs to be understood. So, if we did nothing, like some of you folks are saying, "Oh, we made the brewery order just for them." That's true at the beginning from the staff. They thought it would be easier to streamline it. However, the restrictions are much greater to this brewery than wineries and to the AT. It's stricter than the AT district, because you don't have as much latitude. You can't do as much with it.
Yes, that's what we're asking for.
Okay, and so that's what it is. And so, let's just make sure we understand that.
No, I understand that we're asking for a lot of conditions. This is a very significant impact that changes the very fabric of our community, so...
Yeah, but see, here's another thing you guys got to understand, is there is no wine district. We tried that, Rick, when was that, Valducci, when was that, back in the late 90s or early 2000s, tried to do the wine district, right? He does Valducci's Winery, right? He's in here for a CUP as well. So, and you, so we tried to do a district so we could just keep the wineries down in that area. It was called the scenic byway. You guys remember that? So, we don't have an actual, we don't have a district. We don't have a zoning district. So, by law, if we allow these wineries that's been there 100 years to trying to control them, we can't say, "Oh, well, you can't come north of 94. We don't have a district." So, we can't do that. So, it's a legal thing. So, when you keep saying, "How can you allow a brewery or something in an agricultural district?" We had to do the AT district to try to control it. And the fact that it wasn't working, it was working. You got to get that. It was working because it wasn't working, okay? But you may, there's folks that disagree with me, but that's the facts, okay?
I was just loving that sentence. That made sense in your head. That's all it took, so there you go.
So, anyway, but it's just so you understand that. I mean, everyone thinks there's some big conspiracy. There's no conspiracy. I mean, Jesus. Is there anything else?
I would like to clarify, and Steve, stay up there if you want to, regarding the abilities. Is that appropriate?
I don't think so at this point, because we're still in public comment, and you have a question, this gentleman?
I'd like to thank Steve too, because I knew I already worked, and I think his level-headedness comes from his fine St. Paul upbringing. You knew that was coming, okay? Additionally, I just want to make a point, if I understand this new process, all the hard work that you guys did, that you did to get this new substitute bill, we're not going to be able to vote on this, it's not going to be introduced tonight's meeting.
I can't even introduce it tonight.
So, we can introduce it next meeting, which puts the whole process on other...
No, I think we'll put it on, Joanne, are we going to be able to put it online after tonight's meetings as a substitute bill? I mean, how is a resident going to be able to view it?
I don't think she's going to be able to answer that until after the meeting, and then they decide what they're going to do, whether they're going to stipulate or not.
What if we stipulate right now?
I think you have to wait until we finish the whole process.
Can we make it a two-meeting process instead of a three? I guess that'd be a question.
Okay.
Sure. I just think you need to get through public process, and if the applicant then still feels that they want to stipulate, they have every right to do that, but they do have the right to hear everything that the public has to say before they make that decision about whether or not the record contains everything they want it to contain.
And we can make a change to this prior to the next meeting, because it's under the section that allows that, correct?
After the hearing. Okay. Do you have any questions of this gentleman?
I don't have a question for him. I was going to echo something that was mentioned, but if it's not the appropriate time, I can talk later.
Okay. I just wanted you to be aware, you could ask, if you have any questions of the speakers you...
I think you can actually come up and clarify the point. You have the opportunity, Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe, or Keith, the applicant does have the opportunity during this conditional use permit time to question anyone who comes up and brings up an issue. You can't question that, or clarify a point if you wish. Sorry to jump in there.
No, that's really what I was trying to get to, because you reminded me of it. He can do that.
So, this would be your time.
Okay. We haven't spoken enough?
Do you sound mis-spirited? You will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, when Steve and I were working together on the AT guidelines that we were trying to sculpt, to work with the brew house UDO, I was under the impression that it was everything, including the abilities. Now, I understand that we didn't apply for those abilities. Those are not in the concept plan that we agreed to, the lodging, the conference center. But it was my understanding that we were going to absorb 100% of the verbiage that was in the AT guidelines, which down the road, if we wanted to apply for one of those uses, we could. So, we were getting the good with the bad. I was not under the impression we were only agreeing to the restrictive portions, but we were agreeing to the beneficial portions as well, knowing that we don't have the automatic right to do those things, because they're not a part of the CUP application.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
I would say that we never discussed the permissions as part of the process.
Okay. Next speaker, please.
On bills 4657 and bills 4658, Dave Berghoff.
Do you sound mis-spirited? You will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do. Yes, my name's Dave Berghoff. I live in 4479 Wilson Road. My property attaches up next to this proposed brew house, and I've been involved with Steve and Mark and the meetings and stuff like that, and we were talking, trying to come up with some concessions. I will say, when I first got the letter, I was absolutely, it was like, this is so open-ended, I was opposed to it. But then, I will say, I'm an engineer as a background. Started looking at it as, what is the, what's really going on here? You know, you can't just say no without knowing facts. So, it was very gracious that the applicant came and met with a lot of his neighbors at the park and kind of going over that. It made things, a lot more information was given to us there than was in the letter that we got into planning and zoning. So, from that time, we've been working on, what can we do to make this actually, you know, be something that could work that for both the residents and for the applicant, if this is going to go forward? You know, when we came up with a lot of these restrictions, I mean, it really got to the point where we felt like, hey, we've gotten someplace where it wasn't perfect for either side, and we got to some good things. The one area I'm really going to speak into is kind of the hours that you're talking about. I've been to a number of the wineries. I've been kicked out at 5:00, 6:00 o'clock in the evenings on a Saturday night on a number of them, you know, and it seems like that's fairly common, to speak to the hours of the pole matches. I've been out there for a number of them. I think that's a great thing that the applicant has brought to the area. Most of those end, you know, before it gets dark. So, the trucks, the cars, everybody pulls out before it's at night. So, with this one, though, you know, for the hours, you know, now you're talking about people coming out at 9:00, 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night and going by residential areas, you know, kind of hooping and hollering and things like that. And, you know, I know during some of these meetings we've had with the applicant, they votes, both had votes voiced the opinion that, you know, they liked the quietness and out there, you know, that's one of the reasons they wanted to kind of bring this thing out to that area, just to show the beauty and the nature out there. And, you know, both of them have said, "Hey, we do recognize that the noise and keeping everything nice, and so where people can recognize and use the use of the property, you know, they should be able to see that and take advantage of that." I ask you as a council to consider what with Steve and people and the applicant have worked very hard on coming up with some, you know, conditions that allow this to be something that can work and be nice for, let's say, Charles County. And some of those, like I said, is the lighting, the noise, some of the traffic, some things that they can't control is, you know, and I'm speaking for myself, I'm a Harley owner, and here the Harley bikes taking off when things are leaving, it can be kind of annoying at times. I hope that you consider that, that let's make this to where it could be something that people would be proud of, and let's hopefully recognize a lot of the work that Steve and other people have put down, Mark, Billy have put in on this to come up with something that can work and people can enjoy.
What, do you have a specific suggestion or recommendation for what you would consider being reasonable timeframes?
Well, actually, what I saw on that Boone letter that came out, where, that they were talking about, and I guess it came from planning and zoning, unfortunately, the second planning and zoning because of work conflicts I couldn't be at, those seemed fairly reasonable to me, you know, saying, "No amplified music after a certain period of time." I don't think they're saying you have to close by that, but keep the amplified music, you know, move to inside. There's a number of things that they've talked about, special events. They're saying there's a very limited number of special events, and so like that, all we're saying is, you know, have the special events, but, you know, trying to keep outside amplified music, you know, shutting down at a time that, you know, makes it to where everybody in the neighborhood doesn't have to hear it.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Did you have any questions, this gentleman?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker on bills 4657, 4658, Arnie Deanoff.
You will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, members of the council. Arnie, CAC Deanoff, public advocate and resident. And the first thing I'd like to do is make a point of order with the county councillor that Missouri state statute does not limit public testimony at publicly held public meetings, public hearings involving land use, involving zoning, budget, and plans before the county council or any governmental body in Missouri. That is a state law. Now, the parking, or the traffic study, there has been no submittal, and there's no public disclosure. This is a dog and pony show, in my opinion. The study has not even been complete and barely underway, as we heard testimony before. There's a number of items of the study document that need to be done. Therefore, it's very incomplete. This should be and needs to be a requirement upon submittal to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and this really should have been done three months ago, not at the last minute, at the last hour before the county council. This is a joke and a lackadaisically approach of the applicant, and a requirement that needs to be first and foremost according to our codified code of ordinances. These are guesses with no hard facts, in my opinion. Why are we not having our county highway commissioner, who's back here in the audience, who's a registered county engineer? Why don't we have the host of engineers on our county staff in the Department of Highways and Streets, and our county transportation director do an impartial and non-biased study to ensure that residents' concerns are being met? Now, as the testimony from the traffic engineer, it's at least going to double the usage and may triple or quadruple. Where is the completed traffic study and the impact study? As I said before, it should have been done three months ago. We, the public, need, want, and desire this vital information. There's lots of missing pieces of the necessary puzzle to make intelligent decision of you as elected officials on behalf of 430,000 county residences, or county residents. I'm questioning the documents, the last minute filing them with county staff, planning staff. You know, we have a chapter 610 violation in terms of disclosing these proper documents to the public and the residents to prepare for this meeting. Proper public notice was not given, and I think that the attorney general should look at violations of chapter 610, the Open Meetings Act and Public Documents Law. As I said, the traffic study, in my opinion, this company is not a non-biased third-party vendor, but yet has been hired by the applicant and paid by the applicant. I have not heard anybody on the council in the 13 items which talk about the site plan to be approved by the community development department, public health regulations to be met, amplified sound to end by 10:00 p.m., all functions to end by 11:00 p.m., all outdoor sound to end by 8:00 p.m., the restaurant to end service by 10:30 p.m., all parking to be on the site, special use permit from the highway department for the entrance to this facility, type III landscape buffer, forested and tree lines not to be disturbed, truck loading and unloading to only occur from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., certified drilling of sand aquifer from a hydrologist, tours only on the 80 acres, not the entire 176-acre property, the building load of 250 individuals at one given time, and the exterior lighting plan. I don't see some conditions that are on there in terms of improvement to the roadway. This is going to be a burden of capital improvements of the applicant, and it shouldn't be the burden of the taxpayers of St. Charles County. I'm asking that an impact fee be applied to Mr. Bush in this venue, and that he should pay for all entrances and all improvements to Benny Road. Accessory uses, what has been talked about at previous planning and zoning commission meetings was the use of an existing skeet shooting range and a firing range. Well, folks, alcohol and firearms don't go hand in hand. I don't see anywhere in these conditions that you are prohibiting the use of the skeet range or the firing range on this property. It needs to be a prohibited condition. Security, public safety, our police chief is here in the audience, traffic, increased traffic enforcement, intoxication of people leaving this facility, underage drinking, and the burdens placed on our police department. We're going to have to hire one or two new officers to keep up with the traffic demand that this facility will bring. I'm sure Mr. Bush will be very successful in this property, and I'm sure those traffic counts will go up five, six, seven times in coming years. I wish him all the luck in his endeavor, but there needs to be a balance with the residents and Mr. Bush, who's coming after the houses have been built. Sales tax and alcohol tax, is it going to be enough to pay for the increase in public services of our highway department, our transportation department, our planning department, code enforcement, police services? This conditional use permit needs to be shored up. It needs to be win-win and provide insurances and legal ramifications, so if this facility doesn't abide by the rules and play by the rules, that we have a teeth or means to close them down and make them, bring them into compliance. Landscaping, we've talked about the berm and the buffer, that's been addressed, but we haven't talked about landscaping in the property to ensure that the residents around the facilities, properties are being maintained and the property values are being upheld. The buffer zone was talked about, the 150-foot setback, I'm okay with that, but we haven't talked about the water runoff created by this facility and the permits that are needed from the Department of Natural Resources and the Department of Public Health and other agencies like alcohol, tobacco, and firearms. Lighting illumination plan, I've seen no illumination plan of the property. Bremelsec Park, we have a award-winning, world-renowned astrology park. A lot of people use that on the weekends. If you go out there, there's a lot of people that have their telescopes set up. How is this lighting plan going to affect the astrology park at Bremelsec Park? Have you talked to our parks director, who is here in the audience, to get his input and his staff's input into the lighting plan? I haven't heard anybody talk to the parks department yet. Water drilling of the wells and the insurance that the water quality will be insured for all the adjoining residences who have water wells in this district, as it's not serviced by a public water district number two or Decker Creek sanitary district. Smells and odor control, you're talking about a brewery. Has anybody been down to Anheuser-Busch lately? When you go down there, you're going to smell a lot of obnoxious odors from wheat, from the brewing process. How are you... How are you going to ensure that these residences, that their property values are going to be upheld? If you're going to have a smelling brewery process, nobody's going to want to buy their property. I've heard nobody talk about smells, odors, and odor control. Waste removal, as we talk about the ingredients that go into beer, they rot really rapidly. What is the waste process of removing the waste from this facility and this property? Those are my comments. I appreciate you hearing me out. They need to be taken seriously. They need to be part of made of shoring up the thirteen conditions. In my opinion, there need to be twenty-five conditions to ensure the integrity of this property, to ensure that all the neighbors are being upheld, all their rights and property values. We want a win-win all the way around the board. We also want to make sure that Mr. Bush and his endeavor pays for the capital improvements, the taxing on our public safety services and our public county services, that he pays the fair amount of taxes to make sure that we're breaking even on those services. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions, this speaker?
Well, he loaned me a few bucks.
Eric, now move on to the next speaker.
The last speaker on the brew house would be Christopher Wimmer.
Hello, my name is Chris Wimmer. I live at forty-three fifty-four Wilson Road, directly
A little bit, yeah, thank you.
Directly across the street from Lexington Park. I guess first, I want to be really clear to say, I do not oppose this project in our county. I oppose the project at this location. We've heard about traffic, and one of the last speakers put the qualification on there. We're talking about traffic and traffic loads during polo matches and things, but not at night and not when people are drinking. This project is not completely fleshed out. The cart is way in front of the horse. Twice, the architect mentioned, well, we haven't, really haven't figured that out yet. I mean, here we are, you know. Let's have a plan that we can all get behind. We've heard that they're going to have farm-to-table dining at one point. Well, now, we know, hear them say tonight, it's just a step above chips. What do they plan to serve? Two-hundred-and-fifty people inside, two-hundred-and-fifty people outside? It's, that's bigger than any, this is the biggest development in St. Charles County. It should be given the respect of consideration, that it deserves that, that scale of a project. Someone mentioned earlier the argument about people saying they don't, they just don't want this in their backyard. Well, Mr. Bush owns infinitely more suitable site. It's not even a mile away. They mentioned distances from homes. If this exact development was to be situated in this much larger piece of property, those distance would be multiplied dramatically. The architect mentioned eight hundred feet from a home. Well, I live thousands of feet from the polo field, and I hear the polo match very clearly. I hear them describe the dimensions of the field, the rules of the game, introduce the players. I've never complained because it is just once or twice, three times a year. Now, we're talking about something that's going to be open very often with bigger crowds. This really is going to have an impact on this neighborhood. And anyway, my point is just simply, it doesn't seem like the plan is completely fleshed out. Let's put the brakes on it. Let's vote no right now. Let's bring the thing back, let's let Billy bring the thing back up, more thought out on a better site, and all these people will be behind it, I can guarantee you. Thank you very much.
You understand, we're not voting on this tonight.
Oh, I know. I'm just saying, when the time comes. You are going to vote on it.
Yes.
Right.
But if we need more time to make a final decision, we will take that time.
Yeah. And I wonder, now, why, can I ask Joe and Mr. Cronin, why did you get up and leave earlier?
Just now.
You just not want to hear? That's another thing. I'm sure everyone here has had the best of intentions, this neighborhood group and Mr. Bush and his team. But you mentioned earlier that they represented all of us. They, no one represents all of us. You do.
Do you want to answer that?
I'll answer that.
You've gotten up and left.
Just listen.
I'll answer this, okay? Because the gentleman that spoke before you, I've spent ten hours of my life listening to him drone on and on about things he knows nothing about, and I'm not going to do it the next four years of my life.
It has nothing to do with you.
It just does really respectful.
He doesn't live in your area.
You don't understand.
Every government body in this county and wastes our time.
Right.
So, Chris, it has nothing to do with this project or that neighborhood?
Okay. But you bring up another good point. During the planning and zoning, most of the speakers that got up and spoke for the project weren't neighbors. There was a lot of evidence support, to support opposition, and there's very little evidence other than the team. And we're looking to you, Joe, you know, I live in your district. I want you to represent me, you know, that's, that's what I'm here to say.
Well, Chris, you know, we, we go back, I've known you a long time, right? We've done a lot of stuff together on protecting the rural area and all that stuff, and so, and on this particular issue, as I explained before, we, we have the wine district, and one reason our area is so nice is because of the wineries, because the wineries make it, make the rural area, area an asset. And so, we've worked on that to maintain the rural characteristics. So, I'm not, I'm not, I've never said that this is a bad, this is not bad for the county. And I guarantee these council members don't think it's bad for the county. So, what I'm trying to do, and I told Steve this, and I've told the group this often, that we got to try to make this work where it's reasonable for the area.
Right.
Now, where I live, there's a lot of wineries around me. I hear Balducci's, not Balducci's, I hear Tony's place, I live on Schlesberg. I hear music faintly on the weekends. It doesn't bother me. That's the area, okay? But this is a lot more room, this, this place is one of the biggest places out of all wineries land-wise that we've ever had introduced to us. And with the seven percent that's going to lock it in, it's going to have a seven percent li, the AT district says you cannot develop more than seven percent contiguous, right? So, what that is, is that's like a land trust. So, if you were to say that
But this isn't AT.
No, no, but we're putting, well, that's what I'm trying to tell you. On all these conditions, we're putting all that in there. So, that locks it in like a land trust. So, in reality, that one-hundred-and-eighty acres is going to be rural for as long as that business is there, because it's like a land trust. It's locked in.
Right.
So, in my view, the chess game continues where you're trying to block development, you're trying to block, a three-acre subdivision would be worse than this. It would be more traffic. It'd be more development. And so, not only that, we have five-acre minimum now.
That's something, that's
Now, that's my perspective.
That's your opinion. But you did, again, made a good point, and I sent a letter to you all last night, I hope you received. This project could be a win-win-win, win for Billy, win for the county who wants this, and a win for the residents if it was moved down, around the corner. It's a much better place that, we talked about again, about traffic. Traffic's one thing, but just physically negotiating Benny Road is something completely different. Someone talked about the two curves. They're not just curves, they're ninety-degree turns, and one of them goes over a concrete box culvert that's not designed, the school buses don't use Benny Road. I've lived there thirty-two years, and I refuse to make that left. When I go into New Malle, when I come, I go there on Benny, I come home on Hopewell and Schwedie, because making that left has taken your life in your hands every time, at any time of the day. Not to mention, again, the nighttime and the drinking. And I know people drink. You have no control over people drinking, but you do have control over the safety of the road that the drinkers drive on. But it could, this could be a win-win-win. I really think the cart's in front of the horse, the plan's not fleshed out, we've got really good options ahead of us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to put the size of our project in perspective with some of the neighboring wineries that are around as terms of seating. So, we're, we're set up for a maximum occupancy load inside the building of two-hundred-and-fifty people. Yes, we have a large patio, and if, potentially, if we had a wedding, potentially, there could be as many as five hundred people there, but the occupancy is two-hundred-and-fifty inside the building. There is not seating for another two-hundred-and-fifty people outside the building. Currently, the pavilion at Defiance Ridge Vineyard seats three hundred, Quarry Wine Garden seats four hundred, and Montel seats eight hundred. Just wanted to put that into perspective.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
That is it for that topic.
What's the pleasure of the council? Do you have any questions or staff at this point, or?
Just go to, I guess, go to the next CUP, because it's the same as this one. That's the same applicant.
Okay.
I'd just like to respond to the overall group, if I could.
Sure.
I don't need to state my name again, do I? I'd like to respond to a few of the items that were, were just addressed with the public concerns with, with the project and a few of the points that were brought up around the traffic, the sound, the environment, environmental concerns, runoff, I think it was an issue that was brought up, lighting, the health concerns. And, and I think the point was stated a couple of times that there was a cart before the horse type of thing going on here, and that we haven't evaluated all of the impacts that this will have. That's true, we haven't evaluated all of it, but I don't think it's the cart before the horse type of thing. We are given a certain set of requirements that this project must meet, and then we will design the project to meet those requirements. We don't go do the studies first and then figure out what, what we have to meet. So, we are trying to address all of the concerns and the requirements that were given to us by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And in those initial conversations with the traffic engineers and the acoustical engineers and, and the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, with all the criteria that's been placed before us, the initial conversations are, the road can handle the increase in traffic that we anticipate. The acoustical engineer assures us that we can meet all of the sound ordinances of St. Charles County with, with standard means and methods, without having to do anything that would be unduly financially burdensome to the development of the project. Of course, we are going to have to meet all the health code regulations, all the fire code regulations, building codes, energy codes, environmental codes. Those are just parts of the normal submittal process when we go through planning and review. So, for us to have, to figure out all of that stuff, some of these studies are tens of thousands of dollars, and for us to have to invest that type of money, not knowing what target we're shooting for, that would be just an undue burden on the client. Like, why would he invest all that money to not have the entitlement that he knows he can build this project? So, of course, we'll have to meet all of those requirements, and we, we do, we figure out the information that we need to know to make the best decision going forward. So, we asked the traffic engineers, can this road take this amount of additional traffic? The initial observation says yes, it can, and then we'll decide what little nuances we have to do to the road to accommodate any of that traffic. But those are parts of the normal submittal process, not during conceptual review, which is the part that we've submitted before. Another point that was brought up was the potential for future growth. We are submitting for our plan based on our conceptual design, and, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't it ten percent plus or minus that we're allowed to deviate from that conceptual design? We aren't submitting a plan for any potential growth. Our project is not planned to get any bigger than what we've presented, and we can't get any bigger than what we've been approved for. So, the idea that this thing can grow beyond what it, what we've proposed is not correct, I don't believe. We would have to come back in for another, a submittal and go through this process again, should we decide to deviate from what we've proposed at this, you know, during the planning and zoning and here before you tonight. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, and I understand that, and I think most of the members on the council understand that, and, and, and we would, wouldn't expect anymore, like, you know, some of the things brought up about waste and waste and stormwater, we have professional staffs that review that. We don't review that, and I have great trust in all the, in those, in our staff that they'll do their job to ensure that they meet our county regulations, or they might be finding a new job. So, thank you.
Moving on, Bill number forty-six fifty-eight.
Bill number forty-six fifty-eight, requested by Michael Harlberg, sponsored by Joe Brazel, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP eighteen dash thirteen, for a brew house to Blue Heron Polo Club LLC and Blue Heron Farm LLC, property owners and Yardstick Studio LLC applicant.
Would you like to go ahead, Robert?
Am I still sworn in?
You're still sworn in.
Okay. Briefly, this is a second or separate conditional use permit request for forty-twenty Benny Road, on the south side of Benny Road, within a half mile of the conditional use permit we just discussed. The applicant is the same Yardstick Studios, and you may know that the proposed brew house at this location would be on the, the Polo Grounds property. Polo Grounds are sixty-two acres. There's a three-acre parcel that has a building at the entrance where you pull onto the property. There's a building that was built as a stable. Within that building, not outdoors, but within that building, the applicants are proposing what you might call a micro, or a very small brew house. What I mean by that is, this will be for testing and lab purposes and for, and for small-scale brewing lab and offices with occasional indoor events to preview new beer releases. That's essentially what it is. So, there's nothing that's proposed outdoors, it's within an existing building, that's a metal building, and actually under the county's architectural requirements for existing buildings, it does not have to conform to our, our typical architectural requirements. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing and received public comment, considerable public comment. The applicants in this case conferred with, met with, and came up with common conditions that they both agreed upon, and many of these, which were incorporated within the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. Their recommendation was for approval with certain conditions, in fact, fourteen of them. Those are, again, in your packet. I would also remind you that the same CUP considerations I referenced before also apply to this brew house as well. And based on this information, staff, as does the Planning and Zoning Commission, recommends approval of the conditional use permit with conditions as conforming to the conditional use criteria. And given the nature and the scale of the use and the fact that, that the conditional use should be located indoors, the use of this facility as a brew house should not have, should have only minor impacts on neighboring properties.
Does anybody have any questions, the staff, on this one? Next, with the applicant, does he have, do you have something you want to present on this?
I know it's going to be very hard to see this. There's an existing metal structure, as Robert alluded to, that is a building that pre-existed when Mr. Bush bought the property. My understanding is it was used as an office for a company that had some sort of sewage service. Then it was used in conjunction with polo events, and we just want to use it as a temporary office that goes on while the construction is taking place. We've also got, I definitely want to clarify the brewery, we have a research pilot brewery. It's essentially home brewing. It's ten gallons, makes ten gallons of beer. So, it's a very small, little brewery, and it has some freezers we bought at Lowe's that we ferment the beer in. It's literally for research and development, and we'd also
It's literally for research and development, and we'd also like to put out some very small batches of beer in the smaller kegs to key retailers, something like a special restaurant that wants to have their own beer. It'd be fun to be able to put that out of there. So there's nothing allowed outside of the building. We have an excellent relationship with the neighbors next door, and on paper, this thing looks a lot more serious than it really is. It's just utilizing the interior of an existing building.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Does anybody have any questions, gentlemen?
Mr. Godfrey, not so much for this CUP, but for the other one. I had an email conversation with Mr. Summercamp. I'm going to plan on coming out to his house. I want to get an idea from his backyard perspective.
Sure.
Is it a possibility that council members could sometime come out there and take a look at the property, where the actual building, the big building is supposed to be built?
You're welcome anytime, absolutely. Just let us know.
Okay. And I guess we get through staff, how to reach you. Maybe we could, two or three of us could go out there. I think it'd be a good thing to see.
Sure, we can show you where everything goes.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, on this one here, you guys, you and Steve came up with, you, at one time, you wanted to be able to have people come in there and taste beer, but you changed that to just four events a year? Is that the way I read this?
Yeah, well, it's kind of interesting because it was never really the intention or desire, but it's required by the UDO. So there has to be beer produced for on and off-site consumption, and there has to be some element of a public event. So when we were in planning and zoning, we talked about, you know, how that was kind of ancillary to the use. Really, it's just an office and a research pilot brewery. So they suggested that we had four events, and, you know, we're fine with that.
So this is just for employees, basically?
Yeah, it's an office. We have five or six people in our entire company, so, pretty small company. Most of them are here.
Is this the meadow building at the back part of the property?
There's only, well, I was going to say there's only one structure on the property. Technically, there's two because there's a wellhouse, but this is the only habitable structure. It's a 6545 steel pole barn.
Okay.
This was Huffmeyer's place, Huffmeyer Sewage or whatever it was? Is that right?
Yeah, I don't know.
Who was it? Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I guess we'll put it up to public comment at this point.
Well, everyone that had filled out cards, most of them had put for both bills, so I don't know, do you want to go back to them again?
I doubt if their point has changed. Is there any public comment? Does anybody that spoke before like, would like to speak on this one?
Well, I'd like to ask Steve up real quick, if you don't mind. Chairman, is that okay?
Yes.
Steve, on these 14, did you see the 14 points that are in the?
Let me grab them.
Well, that's all right. They're the 14 points on, well, whatever you want to do.
See what you're talking about. Which document are you referencing, Joe? You talking about the actual?
Well, I, yeah, is this your?
The one we submitted, okay.
The 14 points are all on there, from what I?
The 14 points in section one, I believe, were included in the ordinance, because those were the recommendations.
Talking about the 14 restrictions?
Yeah, the restrictions.
Those were the ones that, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, those were the conditions that the Planning and Zoning Commission came up with. The stuff that's listed in section two?
I'm talking about your list.
Yeah. Section one was all stuff that came from, as a result of the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations.
Yes.
And then section two were things that we had agreed to, but did not make the Planning and Zoning Recommendation List. So section two, numbers one and two, were things that we'd agreed to that did not make that list from the Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendations. So if you look at the ordinance that was created as a result, I don't think you're going to see anything off, and both of our documents are similar in that way.
Okay. So, but the 14, those are, I just want to make sure that did make it on there, and it's on the new CUP, so.
I believe that 4658 includes the 14. There's 14 listed as the conditions in here.
Okay.
When we, initially when we reviewed it, it looked like it was accurate to what the recommendations were, and so.
Okay. That's all, questions I have.
Okay. I mean, the only comment I'd like to make, if I can, I was listed as both, if I can take a minute, was, we do have a couple of things that we're kind of still in disagreement about CP 1813. I know when the commission made their choice, it was to allow it indefinitely. We would still like to see the commission or the council consider making it a temporary CUP that would terminate six months after the big brewery is put into place and have all the components of this second CUP incorporated into the design from a residential standpoint, from a resident point of view, anyway.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions?
My only comment with that is, we desire to, we don't desire it to terminate, we desire it to continue on because we'd like to use it as a research pilot brewery. We're attempting to lessen the footprint of the main building right now. It's at 25,000 square feet. We'd like to get it down to at least several thousand square feet. We do not wish to incorporate the research pilot brewery into the building that we're building across the street. So the termination of this CUP would preclude us from doing that, so we'd appreciate it if it stayed. It's heavily regulated, so it's really not going to impose any sort of impact on the surrounding residents.
Can I talk earlier, can I just make a comment again? It's just a real quick comment that something came up earlier about odor from the brewing, and it would be possibly something that would apply to both the small brew house and the big brew house. But since I own property in Wentzville directly next door to the brew house there, and their brewing faces my building, and I'm over there a lot early in the mornings when they are brewing, and you can smell it, but it's not an undesirable smell. It's just there's an odor in the air, and it's nothing that's sickening or anything else. It's just the smell of beer, and, you know, I'm kind of a beer person myself, so it's, I don't find it to be something that would make you sick or ill, or you wouldn't want to be around it. It's just something that's there. That's all.
Thank you.
I just want to make a distinction. Mr. Rohrck is really arguing our point. That brewery's in downtown Wentzville. I just want to be clear. That brewery is in an area designed for commercial, industrial, all to mix. Our area is something completely different.
Yeah, I understand that. I think anybody that's brewed beer knows what it smells like. So it's?
Yeah, we're done, let's go.
Anybody, you got any other questions?
No, sir.
Regarding this?
No, sir.
Make it quick.
Do you need to swear my name again?
You have already been sworn in.
Okay, thanks. I'd like to make a stipulation that my public testimony from the prior application be included in this application to save time. After, upon review of the planning and zoning staff requirements, I don't see where condition number 14 is placed in this new application. My recollection at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was that tours, no more than 20 people would be in attendance, and not more than four events held annually. I don't see anywhere in the, I don't know, somebody copied and pasted from the application before to this, but I don't see where that condition made it onto the paper in the new application. And the other, the 15th condition I'd like to add is that this conditional use permit shall be contingent upon all federal, state, and county licenses and procedures being met and being filed with the Director of Planning of the Community Development Department. I think that's very important, that we have a checklist, that we make sure that everything's being done by the book, and that the proper codes at the federal, state, and county level are being required with. And I think that we need to make that a condition of this conditional use permit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to the conditional use permit 4659.
Bill number 4659, requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by Joe Brazel, an ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP 18-14A for buildings, structures, or open spaces for conducting weddings and/or wedding receptions or other private parties to Richard K. Balducci and Carol A. Balducci property owners.
Mr. Myers.
Thank you. Again, this is a conditional use permit for a, to allow building structures or open spaces for conducting weddings and/or wedding receptions or other private parties, and it would be located at an existing winery. And the winery is Balducci Winery, which is composed of 76 acres. It's about three miles west of Augusta, so there's already existing uses here. They're proposing to build a 7,000-square-foot event center, special event center, and it's not known exactly how many at this point, but it looks like an occupancy, conceptually an occupancy of about 250 people within the event center. They're proposing to hold all events indoors, except for potentially, the wedding ceremony itself could be held outdoors, but any receptions and other events would be held indoors. The Planning and Zoning Commission met, held a public hearing, received public comment, and after they conducted the public hearing and closed the hearing, they recommended that this body approve the conditional use permit with certain conditions to address potential concerns about land use impacts for neighbors. And these include three different conditions that are in your report, in your written report. I would also remind you that the CUP criteria that you may base your conditions upon are also specified in your written staff report. Staff likewise recommends approval with conditions.
Anybody got questions, the staff? There are none, is it the applicant? Are they here tonight?
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
My name is Rick Balducci, 6601 South Highway 94, Augusta, Missouri. It's quite a challenge for Missouri wineries to have primarily an outdoor business with the weather in Missouri, especially this last year's been a real challenge. We really rely heavily, and I'll try to make this quick because I know this has been going on a long time. We rely heavily on on-premise sales. wholesale and off-premise sales are improving, but it's still nothing like West Coast wineries or imported wineries, so we rely heavily on on-premise. There's a great demand for private parties and events. So we decided to try to put up an event center, and then later put an additional bed and breakfast to enhance the project at a later date. The project is a little under 7,000 square feet. The music will always be inside, except possibly a violin or guitar during the wedding reception I envision 250 people for an event, 300 max probably. Music will stop at 11:00 PM, and I think that's what we, you decided with Chandler Hill and some of the other wineries. I will say this, no later than 11:00 PM. That's when the event will end. That's about all I have, really.
Rick, what kind of business you do during the week?
It's slow, it's pretty, well, it depends. October could be pretty busy, you know, May can be pretty busy.
Like 100 people, maybe?
Yeah.
Something like that? That's a busy day on a, during the day?
It is, it is, but there's also events you have during the week, and that's one thing about the event center, you can get into corporate events. There are things that happen, different organizations look for a place in a rural area which has a beautiful setting.
How long you been in business now?
Well, we've been there 33 years. We planted grapes right away, and we've been open to the public since 2001.
How long, how long do you stay, you close at what time? Let's say a Saturday or Friday or something?
Well, normally it's Saturday, 7:00.
And then do you have weddings typically?
On Fridays sometimes, when we get, during the winter time, when we get more in the restaurant business, maybe 9:00. We're never open past 9:00.
Because that's just how the business is?
No, we do have weddings on occasion on Fridays, 10:30, 11:00 is it.
October, what time do you close? Do you stay open later in October or September?
October, 9:00 on Fridays, 7:00 on Saturdays, and 6:00 on Sundays.
Okay, but you don't have any restrictions? That's just your choice, or what?
That's our choice. That's our choice, yeah.
I'm just curious, Robert, why does he have to get, I'm just asking, why's he got to get a CUP for this one? Is that not part of the winery venue for him to be able to have weddings and stuff, or what?
Well, we adopted, the county adopted the specific use for events in the agricultural district, and now the applicant is proposing a 7,000-square-foot event center. So to be in conformance with that conditional use permit requirement, he's going through that process to get review and potential approval.
But when he, when he applied as a winery, wasn't that all grandfathered in? I mean, should I not be asking these questions like on the floor, or what? Because I'm really confused why he's here.
You know, any number of wineries have held, I think, occasional events off and on for some years. In this case, there's a specific event center, an expansion of that, and a specific building dedicated to this sort of use on a regular basis. So now that he's proposing this after the ordinance has been adopted?
But you, Rick, you've been doing weddings for quite a while, right? I mean, all the wineries do, I'm just asking.
Yeah, we don't do a lot, we do a few. Yes, we do.
I was just curious why, I didn't understand why he was here to do a CUP for weddings, but.
Well, I didn't, I didn't know that either, and then I said, I heard that in recent year or two, whatever, that it was required to get a CUP. So that's what I applied for. I think, what, four or five years ago, that probably wasn't the case, was it? I don't think so.
That's when we started the AT District, I think, is when we had, trying to get this stuff wrapped around.
It's just any time anyone's coming in for an expansion. So you had one, what, last, earlier this year or last year, who was adding a large debt expansion? If they are expanding their use, then we go ahead and capture the new uses so that they are current and up to current ordinance. But if they do nothing, just keep doing the same thing they've been doing for 30 years, no change, they don't have to have any new purpose.
Makes sense.
Mr. Cronin.
Mr. Balducci?
Yes.
You've been doing this for like 30 years, and I was reading that application at the nearest residential properties by 800 foot away from yours, residential home. Have you had any complaints in those 30 years from the neighbors?
No, we haven't. And I have talked to the neighbors, by the way, about this project.
And the reason I'm asking that is, the proposal was right before us, the distance was 800 foot from the event venue to the nearest residential house. It's identical to what the distance is from your event venue to the nearest house.
Yeah.
So, and just in support of this, I can tell you, we went through a lot of blood, sweat, and tears with a similar wedding event in my district last year, and we have had zero complaints out in that area, so.
Yeah, I've talked to my neighbors, the Seams, two different families, and they were fine with it, so.
Okay.
At PNZ, it passed unanimously, and we had nobody in opposition to it, so I think we can safely move forward.
Okay.
Do we have any people signed up for public comment?
Just Mr. Dean Off as signed up, just being on 4659 and 4660.
Did he sign up for this one?
Yes.
Okay. We'll open up this to public hearing.
We had a Catholic church going on.
Do you need to swear my name again, or am I still sworn in?
You are still sworn in.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, members of council. Thanks for the opposition of the two council members who decided to leave and not
Thanks for the opposition of the two council members who decided to leave and not hear the public testimony, Mr. Cronin and Mr. Brazel, make that matter a public record, that that's very unprofessional.
Let's keep your comments towards this CUP, please.
I'll get there. So my name is Arnie C. A.C. Deanoff, public advocate and resident. I'm of full support of this application, as I testified to the Planning and Zoning Commission. This applicant has met every met with staff, met with the neighbors, he's done everything that he should. He is a good neighbor, as a matter of fact, installed decibel meters to be in compliance with the code for any noise complaints. And so I'd ask unanimous approval of the council. Let's not delay this applicant and this businessman. Let's, our wine country is a designated place throughout the world and throughout the county. It's known throughout the United States. Let's keep building this district, make it one of, let's make it shine above Napa Valley. We've got that potential, and this gentleman is a stellar proponent and proprietor of doing that. And so I ask for unanimous approval. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Anybody have any questions, the staff? Let's move on to the next conditional use permit. Forty-six sixty.
Bill number forty-six sixty, requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by Joe Brazel, an ordinance granting conditional use permits CUP eighteen dash fourteen B for a bed and breakfast residence to Richard K. Balducci and Carol A. Balducci property owners.
Go ahead, Mr. Myers.
Thanks. I would state that the facts from all we just heard also pertain to this property as well. It's the same property, Balducci Winery. In addition to the event center, the applicant is proposing a bed and breakfast residence. And quickly, what this is, is a residence with no more than five rooms, where they serve breakfast, where there's a resident who lives there, who interacts with the guests. And that's the, that is the definition for bed and breakfast residence. This property actually, years ago, years ago, was approved for, excuse me, a bed and breakfast residence in that historic farmhouse, and I understand that may now be inactive. But, so this will be a separate one also on the property. I would say, since there is an existing residence on the property, in agricultural zoning districts, typically you can't have two residences on the same property. So one way to make this work could be that in the proposed conditions, it would include a condition that a five-acre parcel be created from the total seventy-five acres on which one of, or the other residences would be located upon. So that way, there would be only one residence on each property. County staff, excuse me, Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing and received public comment, closed the public hearing, and recommended approval with two specific conditions. And Planning and Zoning staff likewise recommends approval.
Okay.
Good question. How difficult is it to create a five-acre tract separating it off? Not only difficulty, but do you know what the cost involved in doing that is? Do you have any idea what the cost would be?
I don't know, the cost, it could differ depending on whether you have, if a subdivision plat has to be created. And I believe in this case, a subdivision plat would not have to be created. Instead, it would require a licensed land surveyor to create a boundary survey, and then file a copy of that survey in the county recorder's office.
Have you had this conversation with Mr. Balducci?
One of our staff members has, yes.
Has, have you agreed to it, or are you okay?
Hold on one second, Rick, before, I mean, you can say something, no, come on up here. But if this is a conditional use permit, I mean, we can just remove that condition, right?
He's asking us to add that condition.
But, Robert, why, though, I mean, I mean, if it's seventy-five acres, there's multiple farmhouses on it, and it's already a winery. There's a lot of wineries with multiple buildings on them. Why would he have to subdivide that? If it's a conditional, if it's up to us to make the conditions, we could just remove the condition.
Joe, it's already been done.
Oh, all right.
I talked to Ellie.
I'm trying to help you out there.
No, I know you were, I know you were, and I appreciate it. The house, my house, was separated off from the property because I wanted to get a thirty-year mortgage on that three, so we separated three acres and my house off, the house you're talking about, the historic house. A number of years ago, I've got the survey that was done by Mark Ditch, Ditch and I forget his partner's name, but anyway, done by Ditch. And the question was, was it recorded? And it was recorded, and I think Ellie was going to, I was gonna talk to her about that, to make sure it was recorded. But that's all, it's been done.
Okay, great, thank you.
But one thing, we just had a hiccup on this before, was that, did you, we have a five-acre minimum, so make sure he doesn't get hitched up on that issue.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there are two circumstances under which a three-acre parcel could be created in an agricultural zoning district. So we'll check that for you.
Okay, I'll have to get on that, make sure that that's all been done.
Okay. Do we, we'll go ahead and open up this.
Thank you very much, Arnie A.C. Deanoff, public advocate and resident. Just to make it a point of the record, Mr. Cronin and Mr. Brazel went to the back room, the conference room, not listening to public comment or the public hearing. Mr. Balducci is a class act. He will be a great asset to the wine country. The wine country is in desperate need of bed and breakfast, and so I ask for unanimous approval of the council and full support of this project. He's done everything that staff has requested and required of him. All statutes are being met in the codified code, and so I ask unanimous approval. Thank you.
It is okay to say ditto with these things, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. Sounded like, more like a commercial, but what do we got next here? Okay, we're open. We're done with that bill, we'll move on to public comment.
Comment, we have David Stokes.
Oh, David, sorry.
This is a completely different part of the agenda, so we don't have to swear you in.
Good, I'll make everything up then. Thank you, members of the council, Mr. County Executive. Thank you all for allowing me to speak today. My name is David Stokes. I'm the executive director of Great Rivers Habitat Alliance. And I'm here to speak in regards to Resolution eighteen thirteen, I believe that's the correct number. That's upcoming on the agenda. That's a resolution introduced by councilmembers Brazel and Cronin. Correct me if any of that's incorrect. Stating the opposition of this council to the Port of Lincoln project in southeastern Lincoln County. If you're not familiar with the Port of Lincoln project, it is a gigantic floodplain and floodway project. It's all in either the floodway or the floodplain in far southeast Lincoln County. To do about, it's a seven-thousand-acre proposal, seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty, seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty, to be precise. That's eleven square miles, and while there is some green space on the proposal, it's probably about five-thousand acres of farmland, hunting land, floodplain, floodway, that's gonna be paved over, asphalted off, levied off, or filled out of that floodplain. And the Facebook page of the Port of Lincoln, USA project, that's where they do most of their announcements. They announced just about a month ago that they were going to be, this project has been talked about for years. And they announced on their Facebook page, and we take them at their word, that they're gonna be moving forward with permit applications in two or three months from now. So this is the time, and I commend the council members for introducing this resolution. This project would be, in our belief, at Great Rivers Habitat Alliance, just devastating. Be devastating for, first of all, the flood, flooding and flood safety. Can you imagine taking a seven-thousand acre, seven-thousand acres out of the floodplain, paving it over, levying it off, filling it up, and what that would do to flooding in the Lincoln County, St. Charles County region, to do that level of damage to the, to our river and their floodplain? Not to mention, you're talking twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week of, it's a huge distribution, warehouse, logistics, shopping, grain, grain, and there's a port, there's a three-hundred-acre port proposal. And again, we take them all, their word with what they're saying here. They haven't gone, they haven't applied for permits yet, but this is what they put out on their Facebook page. And seven, twenty-four-seven of that, with the light and the traffic and the noise, would really incredibly threaten and damage this area's hub as one of the midwestern hubs for sporting, hunting, conservation, and that type of recreation. And that type of constant light, noise, pollution would be incredibly damaging to that. Then on top of that concern, there's just a simple, I mean, they want to expand seventy-nine as part of it, but they would be putting enormous numbers of trucks on that highway every day, along with forty-seven. There's a major truck and barge part of this, and all these all these trucks would be dramatically going through this area, and we would think would be very dangerous to the people of Lincoln County and the people of St. Charles. I will say, a councilmember Brazel asked me if they were to recommend any changes. If I had, the airport part, which I understand is in the resolution, that has been taken out of the proposal. So you may want to remove the airport line, and I'm not being presumptuous here. The council member suggested it, if there's anything like that, I could do that.
All right.
So I commend the council for this resolution, and I'd be happy to take any questions if you have it.
Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Arnie Deanoff.
We'll get to that part later.
Me and Cronin are burning our pizza off.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Arnie C. A.C. Deanoff, public advocate and resident. You know, it's a shame, it's disrespectful for elected officials, county council members, to not listen, get up and go to the back room, the conference room, in a opposition to what I have to say. Go huff and puff, stomp your feet and cry. You know what, I have a right to speak, and I'll take every opportunity to speak and be part of our democracy and our republic here in St. Charles County. The nation is watching, and the nation will know what we do here in St. Charles County. I'm glad that the five of you know how to set the example, and the two of them are back in the back room crying like little babies. It's a shame. It's rude. Settle in, Mr. Cronin and Mr. Brazel, with your seventeen-thousand-eight-hundred-dollar salary, tax-paid health benefits to the amount of twenty-thousand dollars for you and your family. And you know what, I'll be at every meeting, I'll ask the important questions, and be the watchdog of our county government, for the people, by the people. You know, this project, Resolution eighteen thirteen, it's, there was no discussion by the council, and all of a sudden it shows up on the agenda. It's because Mr. Elam wants to have a port authority here in St. Charles County, and wants to build that project in our county. Why, we wanna have our own project and our own report authority. What, we're behind decades, we should've discussed this decades ago. We're behind the eight ball, and now we're opposed to Lincoln County all of a sudden? The two thousand and nineteen proposed county budget. You know, you need to cut the three county lobbyists at eighty-thousand dollars times three. You need to cut the eight public information positions and make one communications officer for the county. We have a growing population, and we need more police officer positions. What did the police chief recommend? Nobody heard what the police chief recommended. The administration, Miss Lycom, is recommending three police positions for the unincorporated county portion of ninety-five thousand residents. We need county support services for our four-hundred-and-thirty growing population needs and the municipalities that our county police department covers for support. We need, and then on the agenda, you're increasing the county council number two, assistant chief of staff position? How much is that gonna cost taxpayers, is what I'd like to know? And the two-to-three percent increase for county employees, it's a joke. It's a slap in their face. It's an embarrassment that you as elected officials who gave yourself a huge increase of over fifteen percent are only giving two-to-three percent to the grunts and the people that you employ. That's shameful, that's a tragedy, and that is ludicrous of you to give that to our hard-working county employees when you receive the fifteen percent pay raise as county council members this election cycle. Grow up and do the right thing on behalf of the county.
Any other public comment? Well, we'll close public comment. Is there anything from the county executive tonight?
Well, I had a long presentation, but I think I'll hold it till.
You're a wise man.
We appreciate that.
Hey, David, we gonna talk about resolution, are you gonna, did you read the resolution?
No, we haven't. No, we haven't got to that yet.
Oh, okay, you were just, okay, I got you, yeah.
We're at the consent agenda. Is there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Move to accept.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Where are we at now?
Resolution.
Oh, here we are.
Resolution.
Okay. Resolution eighteen thirteen, it's been a long night, and.
Resolution eighteen thirteen, sponsored by Joe Brazel and Joe Cronin. A resolution opposing any legislation that seeks to support and/or implement the Port of Lincoln project proposal. Whereas the St. Charles County Council is concerned for the future well-being of the residents of St. Charles County and for the condition of Missouri's infrastructure. And whereas the St. Charles County Council is concerned with the proposal made by the Port of Lincoln Consortium to create a multimodal facility, including a processing plant along the Mississippi River. And whereas the St. Charles County Council believes this proposal will do permanent devastating and wholesale damage to the environment, wildlife, habitat, and heritage in Lincoln and St. Charles Counties. And whereas the total proposed project area is over seventy-one hundred acres or more than eleven square miles of paved-over farmland and floodplain for this new development to include a freight terminal with warehouses to support truck, barge, and rail operations, a three-hundred-acre port, and an airport with a runway at least two miles long. And whereas the St. Charles County Council is concerned that much of the proposed project consists of raising of the floodplain by fill or levy, which would further constrict the Mississippi River and increase flooding in the regions near Port of Lincoln, ultimately resulting in devastating effects on St. Charles County. And whereas increased truck traffic as a result of a major new distribution center on Highway seventy-nine could severely increase safety risk to motorists, commuters, and St. Charles County residents. And whereas the development of such a large area in the heart of the Mississippi flyway could be disturbing to the surrounding environment. And whereas the St. Charles County Council believes there are numerous ports already in the region which can handle current river freight traffic without the possible environmental damage and safety risks this proposed project could bring. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Charles County, Missouri, as follows. Section one, the St. Charles County Council hereby opposes any legislation, local, state, or federal, which seeks to support and/or implement the Port of Lincoln project.
Steve, I have any comments?
I got a comment real quick. What was it, Steve? The Monarch Levy, and what were the two, the Chesterfield Levy? When they did revise the Irma maps, they raised third on, the river level was raised two feet on the flood level, and thirty-five-hundred homes in St. Charles County had to be placed in a hundred-year floodplain. From five-hundred to one-hundred, and then it added a bunch into the five-hundred. So what that means, if you had a five-hundred-year house that you bought that was in a five-hundred-year floodplain, you're mandatory to get flood insurance. And so on a hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar house, your flood insurance would become automatically twenty-five-hundred bucks a month, which every house, which one of my houses down in Defiance, when I lived in Defiance, that's what happened. Every house in Defiance was put into the hundred-year floodplain. So they take, not only do they take your property rights away, but it devalues your property by building these levees, and seven thousand, I don't even think those two, those two developments down there, Steve, they weren't seven thousand acres, were they? The Mon, were they, Dave, do you know? They weren't even close to seven thousand acres.
I don't think they were as large as the Port of Lincoln, but I don't know the exact size of those floodways.
So it would be, it would absolutely create flooding problems in St. Charles County, absolutely. And so this is a terrible project for us. And all it does is it'll take seven thousand acres out of the floodway and the floodplain. The water has to go somewhere, so it just floods additional properties in St. Charles County.
Yes.
Si, I take a little different take on this. My wife's family is from the Lincoln and St. Charles County floodplain area. I've spent my entire youth, what we call the bottoms, enjoying the wildlife and the river and everything that belongs to that bottoms. I also own farm ground round right above this, that's actually underwater right now. Whenever you put a project in this big, his words were exactly right, it's devastating. I've talked to folks with Missouri Department of Conservation that I know, and Ducks Unlimited, and they're all deeply concerned about this. I'm hoping this is gonna be, end up like the Disneyland that was gonna move in north of Troy years ago, and this thing's just all smoke and mirrors. But this resolution is just to be safe, to let them know that we don't support this in any manner. It will devastate the area. That is a pristine area, and so important for the Mississippi River migration.
or giving resolutions based on what other counties are doing, but this one is going to directly impact what happens in St. Charles County. So for that reason, we have a break with my normal rule of not sticking my nose into other jurisdictions, but their action is going to have an impact on us, and I think that's something that we need to make sure that we stay on top of and make sure when they're, if they do apply for permits, that we are there representing the interest of St. Charles County and our residents as far as what the impact from floods should be. Thank you.
Mr. Alvin.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for David. Is this, is this project in unincorporated Lincoln County, or is it in Old Monroe or Winfield or somewhere?
It's, I believe all of it is in the unincorporated parts of Lincoln County.
Which doesn't even have, doesn't even have zoning.
It does not have zoning.
Well, they basically, they don't have to ask, they just go build whatever they want to build.
They can. So that's why I take the resolution, as I read it, when you talk about supporting legislation, I would define that very broadly, to include regulatory approvals at the federal, county, and local level. So I do think.
But they'll need federal, they may need state, but they don't need any local because there's no, there's no zoning.
Right. There won't be a vote at the Lincoln County Commission. There will be numerous regulatory approvals they need to go through at federal, and in Illinois, too. They want to do, they want to have parts that will involve Illinois. So I would, as I listen to it, I just define the term legislation very broadly in my mind, and I think it's very fitting.
Thank you.
Anything else? While I'm here.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I commend the council for this resolution and for your willingness to.
Well, they haven't approved it yet.
Put the cart before the horse.
There are no other comment. We call roll on this, don't we?
Yes, we do. Did you want to amend that to strike the airport that you had requested?
Should we strike the airport since they took that out of the, it doesn't matter, does it?
All right.
No.
Resolution 1813, a resolution opposing any legislation that seeks to support and/or implement the Port of Lincoln project proposal. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
No.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
That bill passes, that resolution passes. Moving on to bills for final passage. First bill is 4655.
Bill number 4655, an ordinance establishing new traffic regulations and establishing penalties for violations thereof.
Any comments or questions? Let's move on to bill 4662.
I'll have to read the roll and take the roll, please.
Oh, these are, oh, these are bills for introduction. Oh, got ahead of myself. I'm sorry.
That's okay. These next two are final passes.
Dave, you just want to get the hell out of here.
I'm getting tired.
An ordinance establishing new traffic regulations and establishing penalties for violations thereof. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
That bill passes. Now we'll move on to bills for introduction, starting with bill 4661.
Bill number 4661, requested by Michael Hulbert, sponsored by Joe Brazel, an ordinance of the county of St. Charles, Missouri approving the preliminary plat of Dry Creek Ranch.
Any comments or questions on this bill? Hearing none, let's move on to bill 4662.
Bill number 4662, an ordinance amending the 2018 budget adopted by ordinance 17-113 for a position within the St. Charles County Council Department.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, please read the bill and call roll.
An ordinance amending the 2018 budget adopted by ordinance 17-113 for a position within the St. Charles County Council Department. Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
That bill passes. Now we'll move on to bills for introduction, starting with bill 4661.
Bill number 4661, requested by Michael Hulbert, sponsored by Joe Brazel, an ordinance of the county of St. Charles, Missouri approving the preliminary plat of Dry Creek Ranch.
Any comments or questions on this bill? Hearing none, let's move on to bill 4662.
Bill number 4662, requested by Craig Takowski, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute the CMAQ program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to reconfigure the intersection of Route Z at Route N to create a single intersection with traffic signal and realign Route Z to tie into the existing alignment at Buckner Road, federal project CMAQ 7302674, for the reimbursement of up to 80% of the eligible costs not to exceed a maximum of $1,534,000.
Anybody got any comments or questions?
I have comments. I, this is great. I'm glad you guys are doing this. The traffic gets so backed up here, it's awful. But Steve, this is what I was talking about. Are we going to get, now that MoDOT has no money, are we going to get, are we going to get our 80%, or what's the rule on that?
I'll let John answer. I mean, this is a CMAC project, right, Sam? John?
Yeah, so the 80% is federal money, but your point is that we're putting in 20% of local money on a state system, so that 20% would be coming from our transportation sales tax, whereas if MoDOT had plenty of money, this would be their project.
So that's how it's going to be here.
So the answer is yes, but the good news is it's only 20%, not 33 or 50% like a lot of other things.
Right. Okay, I understand. I mean, it has to be done, so what are you going to do, right?
And you know that that intersection's a mess.
It's an awful, it's one of the worst, yeah.
Unfortunately, it's going to be a couple of years before we can get to it, but right now, traffic backs up, probably a good mile every night.
Yeah, it's awful, awful.
Any other comments? Hearing none, let's move on to bill 4663.
Bill number 4663, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance approving the transportation improvement plan for fiscal years 2019 through 2021 and corresponding intergovernmental agreements.
Any comments or questions on this bill? Hearing none, let's move on to 4664.
Bill number 4664, requested by Dr. Mary Kay, sponsored by Dave Hammond, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designated to execute a program services contract, amendment number 01, to contract DH 180008005 with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for violent death and enhanced opioid surveillance reimbursement.
Any comments or questions on this bill? Hearing none, let's move on to bill 4665.
Bill number 4665, requested by Bob Schnur, sponsored by Dave Hammond, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designated to execute a program services contract, tracking number 46632, with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for opioid crisis response for an amount not to exceed $11,500.
Any comments or questions on this bill? Hearing none, let's move on to bill 4666.
Bill number 4666, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Dave Hammond, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a professional service agreement between St. Charles County, Missouri, and the United States Attorney's Office for the Eastern District of Missouri in conjunction with the Missouri Highway Patrol as fiscal agent and Jeffrey Ogden as an independent contractor.
Any comments or questions on that bill? Hearing none, let's move on to 4667.
Bill number 4667, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Dave Hammond, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a professional service agreement between St. Charles County, Missouri, and the United States Attorney's Office for the Eastern District of Missouri in conjunction with the Missouri Highway Patrol as fiscal agent and Nauman Wata Lawala as an independent contractor.
Anybody got any comments or questions?
Nice job, Donna.
Hearing none, let's move on to 4668.
Bill number 4668, requested by Bob Schnur, sponsored by council as a whole, an ordinance accepting two grant awards in the amount of $315,000 and amending the 2018 budget adopted by ordinance 17-113 to fund additional program participant costs and salaries in the workforce and business development fund.
Any comments or questions on this bill? Hearing none, let's move on to 4669.
Bill number 4669, requested by Bob Schnur, sponsored by Dave Hammond, an ordinance amending the 2018 budget adopted as ordinance 17-113 by transferring unencumbered appropriations between line items and the general fund budget of the Department of Corrections and the budget of the Regional Medical Examiner Fund.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to announcements. Ms. Laney, anybody have any announcements or Ms. Laney?
I'd like to congratulate the county executive and the other members of the council who were reelected on Tuesday, much to the chagrin of some folks in the room, I'm sure.
Including yourself, Mr. Elman.
Congratulations, you guys.
None of them are on a die.
You never know.
And motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.